Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Sterling Heights City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. May. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanez.
Here.
Mrs. Yarco.
Present.
Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda as is.
Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have a few items on my report this evening. Let me begin by providing an overview of how the recently passed state budget impacts Sterling Heights. We've all heard a lot about the state budget, the looming shutdown, and the 11th hour approval, if you will. And it's important I highlight this because it's very impactful for Sterling Heights. First, some of you may know we get revenue sharing from the state of Michigan. And while it's kind of a mixed bag on revenue sharing, we're going to see a reduction of 8% in constitutional revenue sharing that's passed on to Sterling Heights through the sales tax and other funding sources at the state. So an 8% reduction equates to about $1 million for us in round numbers that we'll see as a reduction. However, at the same time, the state approved a public safety revenue sharing formula that provides approximately $200,000 of new revenue to Sterling Heights. Now, this public safety revenue sharing is based on our crime stats. This is for cities across the state. Now, because of our very low crime and our safe city distinction, we came out on the lower end of that public safety grant, if you will. So we're a victim of our own success in that regard. Nonetheless, that offsets the $1 million reduction sum. So call it $800,000 we'll see in a reduction of revenue. However, we will see significant increases in road funding. In fact, over a five-year period, we will see almost $40 million in new road funding that will come specifically to Sterling Heights. So that's significant. That means we're going to be able to improve more neighborhood roads, additional major roads across the city. We've already done a lot. You know it. Everyone who drives Sterling Heights, you see the roads and how vastly they've been improved over the years and all the construction going on. We're going to actually be able to do more of that now, so you're going to have better roads. Let me go back to the $800,000 that we're losing. Right now, Sterling Heights is one of the few communities in the state of Michigan that contributes money from its general fund to our road fund. We will no longer have to contribute that $1 million to our road fund because of the additional road funding. So at the end of the day, there is no net loss and actually a net gain to Sterling Heights through the state budget. In addition, the state legislature approved $2.1 million in funding for us, for the city to purchase its new ladder truck. Believe it or not, it wasn't too long ago that ladder trucks, 100-foot ladder trucks, cost $1 million. Now they're over $2 million, and the state budget provides funding for our next ladder truck. In addition, some of you may know that we have had a jail detention facility across the way in the police department, but we merged our jail operations with the county. A far better use of taxpayer dollars. No point in having two public bodies run a jail facility. So we combined our efforts with the county. We no longer need that jail facility. We're going through a major renovation for a training space in that old jail facility. The state budget provides $1 million to help renovate that space inside the police department. So all in all, really good news for the city of Sterling Heights with our budget and how it impacts Sterling Heights. I want to thank our state legislative team, Senator Weber, Representative Coon, Representative Robinson, Representative Metzner, Senator Voino, Senator Chang. There was strong bipartisan support at the end of the day for the budget. You all read about this, and Sterling Heights benefited quite significantly. Mayor, moving on, speaking about major projects, you know that there is significant work going on across our city through Utica Community Schools. And it's hundreds of millions of dollars that's being invested in Sterling Heights to upgrade our school facilities. And we're pleased this evening to have the Utica Community Schools Assistant Superintendent of Auxiliary Services, John Graham, who's going to provide an overview of the many exciting projects that you're seeing rise out of the earth.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, and good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. My name is John Graham. As Mr. Vanderpoel said, I'm Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services and basically for the purposes of tonight, really facility management of our 40 facilities and facility planning. We have 40 facilities across five municipalities fallen underneath me. I'm here tonight on behalf of our superintendent schools, Mr. Monroe, to speak about some of the current and previous, in the most recent memory, projects. Before I do so, though, I do want to extend my thanks to the city and to all of the staff in your city departments. We enjoy a great working relationship with many of your departments, very strong relationships, and a lot of cooperation goes on in those various departments, and we're very grateful for all of that. I'd like to start out tonight just really briefly mentioning what guides us at Utica Community Schools, and that is our strategic plan, which was passed through the help of our Board of Education and community members and parent input in 2023. And it's based on the three tenants that you see up there, our culture of empowerment, which really talks about keeping students engaged, preparing for their academic growth, and preparing them for careers. Our culture of caring, which is about the sense of belonging for our students, which really fosters their engagement in their education and providing them an environment of respect. And then really what we're here tonight is to talk about our culture of transformation. And really what this comes down to for the purposes of this evening is really that we have a focus on making our facilities safe, modern, and comfortable for our students and our staff. And then really talking about how we are committed to maintaining a financial position to enable us to have those resources to improve those facilities. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that it's in, you know, in great, there's a great amount of support among Sterling Heights residents for these improvements. They have passed our last two bonds overwhelmingly, our 2018 and 2023 bonds. Without your residents' supports, we would not be able to undertake all these great capital improvement projects that you're seeing across the city. Those projects, not only are they great for our students, but they enhance property values and they increase the desirability and quality of life in the Sterling Heights neighborhoods. So I am not going to read this list. Don't fret over the length of the list. I do just want to point out that at the top of the list, always important to us is the safety of our students and our staff, and we focus first on student safety when we undertake these projects. And we will go through some photos of some of the various projects that are listed here. These are some of the current projects, and then there is also a list of, excuse me, upcoming projects here. So I'll just quickly kind of thumb through some slides here and talk about these. So one of the, under the banner of safety, pedestrian safety is a big part of what we've done, as you know, with the partnership with Sterling Heights, these crosswalks here with the rapid flash beacons on Dodge Park Road. This has dramatically increased the safety for our students at Stevenson High School. Similarly, the crosswalk partnership that we have with the city and also the county on Shana Road in front of Havel Elementary is a great improvement for the safety of our students as well. Just quickly, I'm going to quickly just go through some of the school improvements that we've made. This is Davis Junior High. We were fortunate to be able to make some massive improvements at Davis Junior High. Just before the students from Heritage Junior High were able to join the students over at Davis, new improvements really making it modern and comfortable. These happen to be of the kitchen and server area at Davis Junior High. Likewise, also at the junior highs, Jeanette, this shows improvements made to the Jeanette Junior High Media Center. So the focus here is really about student engagement, collaboration, and group work. You can see there's some individual spaces, but also a lot of work set aside for group work where student teams can get together and work on presentations. There's also computer support where they have a small group, as you can see in the left photo, where they can wirelessly connect to displays and work on their classwork. Similarly, just down the street here in Dodge Park at the Utica Academy for International Studies, we renovated the cafeteria. So really the interest in making these spaces not feel like the cafeteria that a lot of us probably were familiar with when we were in school. As you can tell, it's a modern design, and it's also a shared space. Up in the corner there, we have this instructional space where during the most period of the day, you can have instruction here with collaboration and small groups as well, but it's also a very favorite part of our students are the high-top tables at lunchtime as well. We've also been making improvements to Stevenson Auto Shop, a great program at Stevenson High School. Many students take advantage of this, very clean and welcoming environment there. This particular picture is actually a project that just completed this summer. It's a little bit ambitious to do these large-scale projects between June 15th essentially and August 15th. But there are really a few things I'd like to point out here. On the lower part of the screen is improvements to the general parking area. The traffic flow has been improved, increased parking, which really improves, is helpful for the neighborhood. And then up at the top of the screen is something new for Shoe Shard. When we had talked earlier about student safety, one of the items that was listed there were dedicated bus loops. One of the things that's really important as we do any sort of renovation of site work at our facilities is we are separating parent drop-off from bus drop-off. This not only helps traffic, reduces the amount of backup in the neighborhoods, but also provides that separation of bus and parent vehicular traffic to, you know, again, that's increased student safety. And then finally, I just want to point out a large investment in landscaping for our buildings, and then you can see the two semicircles there, new playgrounds, which is something that was a big part of our 2023 bond, is that every single one of our elementary schools is not just getting new equipment, but totally reimagined and revamped playgrounds. So this was all this summer at Shoe Shard Elementary. And just going back just one year, talk a little bit very briefly about Rose Kid Elementary. You may remember this elementary was actually closed in 2010. And while it did host a lot of programs for the district, it was not an elementary school until 2024, and we put significant renovations into the facility. You can see it there. And the reason for those renovations was to welcome De Kaiser Elementary. It was the home for De Kaiser. We called it De Kaiser at Rose Kid. They were there for a year while we totally reconstructed De Kaiser Elementary, which we'll talk about in just a moment. And you can see here, it looks just like all of our other new spaces. It's clean, it's welcoming, it's comfortable, it's friendly, and lots of flexible furniture options over at Rose Kid. So Rose Kid now has moved on to their new home back at, I'm sorry, De Kaiser has moved on to their new home back at De Kaiser, and Grebner is now taking residency at Rose Kid for this year. And then in June, I know these are really quick timelines, but we just moved De Kaiser out. We moved Grebner in in June. Grebner's moving out, and Havel Elementary will be moving in while we reconstruct that building. So we'll talk about that here just real briefly in a moment. So speaking of De Kaiser, we had a great reconstruction for De Kaiser. This is the previous view of De Kaiser Elementary, and while the building was functional, I would not classify it as necessarily appealing. This is the new De Kaiser Elementary, totally reconstructed. It retains the original footprint of the building with a couple of small additions of square footage onto the building. You can see the original gym, and the bulk of the building is there. So we retained really just the exterior walls and the structural steel in that project. You can see the part of the building that juts out now as an addition, as well as a little additional space as well. And really, this gave us an opportunity to really provide a model for future construction at elementary schools within UCS. And it's a model in two specific and very important ways. The first is student and staff safety. So the design really took into consideration what improvements can we make over what we have been doing for safety to this date and time. And so we were able to compartmentalize the students in a way that we weren't able to do in existing facilities. So you will notice in the bottom photo there, you have these general flexible areas, and then to the left at the very edge of the screen are the classrooms. So outside of all, each two grade levels of classrooms, we have what we call a learning community, which is flexible space, which provides hands-on learning space and collaborative space for those students. But it also allows us to compartmentalize the building and remove the students further from the corridor throughout the building provided enhanced public safety. And so this model of the compartmentalization and the learning communities will be carried forward in all future construction for elementaries within Utica schools. So it's very exciting for that community, and what a great neighborhood to live in. Not only are you close to all the city operations here in Dodge Park, now we have a brand-new elementary school there, again, really investing, increasing property values and the quality of life in the neighborhood. Okay, so we get a lot of questions about this particular project, and I'm sure it's on your mind as well, as you probably drive past it all the time. 16 Mile Road and Dodge Park. What in the world is going on there? Well, it is a movement of a lot of athletic facilities from Stevenson High School's campus over to what used to be vacant open property at 16 Mile Road and Dodge Park. And you can see here that we are moving tennis courts. Currently, Stevenson has six tennis courts. This allows us to give them eight tennis courts, like a couple of other of our high schools. And also, it allows us to move softball from Plum Brook and Dodge Park and baseball from the Stevenson campus over to this new athletic campus. Those baseball and softball fields will be full turf. They will have this little promenade here. We have press boxes, we have grandstand seating, we have concessions and restrooms all on this campus, this athletic campus. And this is a plan, an approach that we will be carrying forward, and I'll talk about a little bit here in terms of Henry Ford, but all of our, all four of our comprehensive high schools will have these benefits through this 2023 bond issue. Now, these renderings kind of show you what it's going to look like, and we had a little delayed response there. This is where we are at as of a couple of weeks ago, and you can see the progress is pretty dramatic there. So we still have a lot of grounds work, and we have to build the concession building yet, and we have a lot of landscaping work yet to be done. But this is scheduled to be complete and open for the spring season of 2026. That means March, this March, this will be open and hosting students and competitions. So we're very, very excited about the use of that property. Just a couple other quick pictures that I'll just kind of go through here real quickly. This is the baseball field, which is, again, baseball and softball are fully turfed. It is a lot of turf, but it is a great opportunity for our students. Most people don't realize that a baseball field has much more turf than a football field. You can fit a football field in the outfield of a full-size baseball diamond there. So that brings me to Runcle Stadium on the campus of Stevenson High School. So this was a part of the rationale for why we needed an athletics complex at 16 Mile Road and Dodge Park, and that is because, as you know, our Stevenson campus is very landlocked. There's not a lot of room there to improve Runcle Stadium. So we're removing the baseball, we're removing the tennis courts to give us the flexibility to make some massive improvements to Runcle Stadium. Those improvements are in the planning stages now, and we'll be announcing some of those plans in the next probably four to six months. And just for a point of reference, I included here some slides of the improvements that are currently under construction at our other football stadium or other athletic stadium, that is Swineheart Stadium that borders Utica High, and you can see dramatic facade and really improving the fan experience. So we will be bringing similar improvements, although it won't look the same, but similar improvements over here to Runcle Field shortly. Henry Ford II, as I mentioned, the improvements that we're making on the athletics really follows on the athletic improvements we made in the corridor, the concessions area, new lighting in the pool area and the gym area, new locker rooms for the students. These were done a year or two ago. Here is a rendering of the fields that will be constructed, are under construction now over at Henry Ford II. You can see the same approach. We have a concession building, we have restrooms, and we have the turf fields kind of surrounding this gathering plaza that is designed to be the central gathering place on the athletic campus over at Henry Ford II. So don't let this worry you. I realize this does not look like the photos from Stevenson, but this is also scheduled to open in March. Really, the milestone that we're striving for is as long as the turf goes in sometime in November before the weather really changes, then we will be on track for spring. So we all have our fingers crossed that this great weather continues to support us over at Henry Ford. So we talked a little bit about Grebner being at Rose Kid. Just wanted to talk real briefly about Grebner. This construction started in the, right after the school let out this year, so June of 2025. And in less than 14 months, we will take the current Grebner Elementary. We will add some additional space. You can see at the bottom, the inside of the building is already vacated and totally removed of anything inside except the structural steel. And in August of next year, we will have the grand opening for the new Grebner Elementary, a dramatic transformation of that facility, really a great addition for that community over there at Grebner Elementary. We're very excited about this. And then finally, the last one I'd like to speak about is Havel. I know I'm trying to go quick in the interest of time and not monopolize the meeting. We have a lot of great things to talk about. The last thing is Havel Elementary. We're just as excited about Havel Elementary.
My son's at Havel, so take as much time.
I see. Well, you might be a little bit disappointed, Mayor, because we have not revealed the renderings previously, and I'm here to say this evening that we are not ready to do that yet, but I will be happy to come back as soon as. This actually is a kind of a pencil drawing of the future Havel Elementary, but we will be unveiling that here in the coming months and be very excited to talk about that. This will open fall of 2027. So in three years, we will have totally reconstructed and reopened three brand-new elementaries in the city of Sterling Heights. Very, very exciting. And with that, I'd just like to close really and to just one more time express my gratitude and the district's thanks to both the city and the residents of Sterling Heights for your support. We could not do it without your voters and your residents' support. So thank you.
Mayor, you can see how this easily adds up to hundreds of millions of dollars. A big part of the city's prosperity is due to our amazing school systems, and there's no doubt that Utica Community Schools is taking it to a whole new level, so we appreciate their investment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. My children are in Utica Community Schools, and I know a lot of people are very excited about the things that are going on there. If I could just have five seconds to add, there was a great no-left-turn sign at Henry Ford High School when you're going out onto Clinton River Road, that that sign's come down now that the construction's going on, and if that sign were to come back up, I know that.
Understand, Mr. Mayor. Was that on the exit that was, used to be a curb that was straightened out?
Yeah.
Might have been an oversight after that straightening took place this summer.
Well, there's a lot of construction still going on there. So I don't know if it's, it's probably in the works, but.
I can assure you it's in the works.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it after some eight, 10-minute waits for one car to turn left.
Understand. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Mayor, continuing on, we wanted to provide a couple of brief highlights on a super exciting program at our Velocity Center. As you know, Velocity is a collaboration business incubator accelerator facility, the only one in Macomb County, right here in Sterling Heights. And with us is Director Paula McPherson, who's going to provide the update.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having me this evening. I'm proud to announce that Velocity was chosen to be a host for Fellows Through Global Ties Detroit. This fellowship program lasts a month, and it is in partnership between the U.S. State Department and Legacy International. They cover all of the travel costs as well as lodging, meals, and any other incidentals. But it's been exciting to have these two gentlemen with us to work on an international landing zone program that we're building out, as well as small business programming. We chose these two projects because they were areas of interest for each of these gentlemen, and part of their mission in coming here is to help us work on a project and then have something to take back home to their own ecosystems to present. And with that, I have both of the gentlemen with me. I thought you might enjoy getting to meet them.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, Councilmen, Councilwomen, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, and Madam Paula, Director of Velocity. I am very honored, as I stand in front of you, grateful for the opportunity and invitation to address your procedures, Council. My name is Mule Hassan. I'm from Morocco, and I am here on a U.S. State Department-sponsored program, professional exchange program executed by Legacy International, together with, in partnership with its city partner, Global Ties Detroit, and hosted by the ever awesome Velocity and Madam Paula. In Morocco, I am a community leader and also an entrepreneur. We are developing an unemployment IT solution for unemployment, hoping, Insha Allah, God willing, to bring prosperity and better income to the pockets of the working class in Morocco and hopefully expanding in MENA, West Africa, and East Africa. Working with Velocity has taught me a lot about the resilience of Moroccan, of American ecosystem. You know, Morocco is still pumping into my blood, so yeah. But learning about the resilience of the ecosystem in America, but notably in Michigan, how you all together are coming together to lift up and better, and help the small businesses, how everyone's efforts are coming together for one sole purpose is to make sure that your small businesses are working, are thriving, and are succeeding. This is my main takeaway, something that's really inspired me and pushed me really hard to go back home, do as best as I can to copy this experience. Also, working with Paula, being very inspiring, being a very great figure leader, providing me with all necessary resources to make sure that my mission is being well-accomplished and my objectives are being met. Sorry for the length of my intervention. Thank you very much for having me around.
Hello. Thank you, members of Council, for this opportunity. My name is Mohamed Akssana. I'm from Algeria. I'm a founder of a startup, which name is AP Market, dedicated to digitalizing procurement and maintenance in automotive industry. I have more than 14 years of experience in entrepreneurship and project management and business development, and I'm passionate about the technology and innovation which can transform traditional industries like mobility and manufacturing. During this experience in this program, Professional Fellows Program here in Sterling Heights, hosted by Velocity, where I'm exploring how U.S. startups grow, structure their financial and operational strategies, and collaborate with the innovation ecosystem like the one in Michigan. We are working with Paula in the project of international landing zone, and my goal is to apply this knowledge when I return home, particularly as I work to launch a mobility innovation hub in Algiers with international partners aimed at accelerating sustainable mobility solution in North Africa. I'm truly honored. solution in North Africa. I'm truly honored to be here in this forward-thinking community, learning from your experience, and hopefully building bridges for future collaboration between our ecosystems. Thank you for welcoming me to Sterling Heights.
So it truly is an honor to get to work with both of these gentlemen, not only to learn about their ecosystems, but to also get to learn from them some of their other experiences that they've had in business as well. And you've heard a lot about international landing zone. And speaking of which, we do have the international landing zone over at Velocity. And one of the things that we are in the process of completing is our new international soft landings landing zone designation. We get that through the International Incubator Association. That designation will provide us with international marketing for Velocity, and it will also open up opportunities for funding. So more to come on that. Very excited. And then last but not least, our accelerator client fundraiser Blankets is going to be on Shark Tank tomorrow night. I'm on the edge of my seat. I don't know if they struck a deal. They have a NDA. They're not allowed to tell us. We already have our press team ready to do a big press release around it, but we're super, super proud of their team. We're really excited to have someone from our accelerator on Shark Tank. And I hope you'll all watch, and we'll keep you posted on more good things to come. Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, it's nice to see Sterling Heights playing a role on the international stage when it comes to nurturing the growth of small businesses across the community, across the state, across the country, internationally. I also wanted to recognize our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, who works very hard on all these initiatives. We appreciate his good work, too. And Mayor, speaking of news and and good coverage, Sterling Heights has been in the news all day today with really creative, innovative projects going on in the fire department centered on EMS. And our fire chief this evening would like to share some of those highlights from the news. Some of you may have missed it, so you're going to hear it from the fire chief firsthand tonight, and then you're going to hear about it on the 11 o'clock news tonight as well. So Chief Edmonds.
Let's get my glasses out to see the screen. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel. Tonight, we're going to talk about some medical service improvements. We've had a press conference today. So I'm going to speak about the medical priority dispatch, and I want to introduce you to Captain Kirschver, who is gonna be or who is our medical, our mobile integrated health position, and he's going to do the presentation on what his job actually is. And then we're going to introduce the two caseworkers that the city has that helps us in the police department handle a lot of these things. So one of the things that we've been working on over over all these years is based, our deployment is based on evidence-based research. So one of the things that's happened over, you know, the last couple of years is are we appropriately using our resources to respond to medical emergencies? So what we want to do is we want to make sure that we're smarter and better placed to be able to do that. And emergency, the emergency medical priority dispatch allows us to do that. So some of the myths, boy, that slide came out bad with the question mark with the thing. Some of the myths that are out there right now are faster response equals better outcomes. And then everybody needs a paramedic. So we're kind of changing that between what we've been doing in the past, which is send in fire engines and ambulances on all the calls, because we don't have that system to prioritize who needs what. And one of the examples I gave to the news media today is if we get a fractured leg, that may or may not be a paramedic response depending on what happens. So as we go through this new process with that fractured leg, if you just have what you think is a broken leg, maybe some swelling, maybe some bruising, we're going to send you that EMT, you know, ambulance, peak staff ambulance. If you have a fractured leg where the bone is still there and you're bleeding severely, you're going to get our paramedic response, which is an engine and an ambulance to take care of you and to give you medications for your pain. So that's what this is all about, is is making sure that we're using our resources appropriately. And then you can see on the left is that we've got the different levels of calls, and we've done that. We've kind of our medical party dispatch actually has five levels now. So this whole process starts with a 911 call. So we've worked really collaboratively with the county sheriff's department, Central Dispatch. They've been great partners in all this. This process, as you know, started a couple of years ago. It's part of the strategic plan. So when we put together a strategic plan, medical priority dispatch was involved in that. So every chief complaint has a unique response level. Like I said, if a fracture comes in, it could have a bunch of different response levels that we do. And we also work with the medical control authority to make sure that these were all vetted and approved by our medical control physician. And it takes a collaborative approach with our members of the fire department to be able to implement this and get this rolled out to the public. So one of the ways that we used to respond is we had basically two major ways is either it was classified as life-threatening or classified as non-life-threatening. Now what you see is that we actually have a blue, red, orange, yellow, and green response. So our blue response is a critical life-threatening. That would be a cardiac arrest, where we would send, based on what we have in service right now, is also proximity dispatch. So if we have an ambulance or fire truck that is rolling by that incident, the computer rated dispatch system knows that that apparatus is there and will immediately dispatch them to that cardiac arrest, followed up by, you know, do they need an engine company or do you need an ambulance based on who was closest there? That actually occurred this past week. We put the medical priority dispatch in place on October 1. And in that time, in that last six days, we actually had that occur, where we had a critical call. A company was diverted to handle that because they were right around the corner, and then another company was dispatched to fill in the assignment for that critical call. So it's actually working. And as you can see on the red calls, it's a serious medical, so it's going to get an engine and an ambulance mostly from that fire station or what's closest. The orange is kind of like, this is a medical call that that probably needs some paramedic assessments, so we're going to send out that paramedic ambulance to handle that. And the yellow and green are EMT levels that they'll go out there. Now, at any point in time through this whole process, as the dispatchers get more information, or if our EMTs are on scene and they need paramedic, you know, help, they immediately can upgrade that assignment and then bring those resources there. So this is a great thing for Sterling Heights. It really makes us efficient. And and I want to say thank you for supporting our department in this venture, supporting this strategic plan, and everything that it took to get this into place. So so thank you for that. And now I'd like to turn it over to Captain Kirschver, who's going to talk about the mobile integrated health.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel, and Mr. Kazuski. My name is Ryan Kirschver, and I'm the Mobile Integrated Health Coordinator for the Sterling Heights Fire Department. I'm here today to highlight some of the incredible work our team has accomplished in service of our community. This program is a testament to the dedication of our city officials and the Sterling Heights Fire Department for empowering us to serve our residents in new and unique ways. We're proud to be on the cutting edge of community service, not just in our region, but across the state. Our work starts with the compassionate first responders on our fire crews. Many of our cases are initiated by them, and their boots-on-the-ground efforts are crucial to identifying residents who need our help. Without their initial commitment, our program simply couldn't function at this level. Our primary goal is to build a strong network of resources to assist residents with complex challenges, which in turn makes our city safer by allowing us to allocate our resources more appropriately. We focused on creating and strengthening these connections through the direct through direct on-the-ground work. This is just an example of some of the resources that we've connected with in the short time that our program has been in service. We have collaborated with Macomb County Community Mental Health, Macomb County Family Services, and other organizations like Hope Not Handcuffs to assist residents struggling with mental health and addiction issues. We've also helped a resident grappling with severe cardiac issues and alcoholism find a turning point by working with his cardiologist. This unified front combining medical expertise with compassionate city support led him to agree to enter a rehabilitation program. A key part of our work is adapting to the diverse needs of our community. We recently attended a crisis intervention team training that introduced us to Carter kits, which are stimulus reduction devices and toys designed to help people with autism. On the very day our training ended, one of these kits was used at Sterling Fest to help an adult with auditory stimulus issues overcome an overstimulation crisis. This simple intervention helped him avoid an unnecessary trip to the hospital. Later this fall, our entire fire department will receive the specialized training, and a Carter kit will be placed on every fire department ambulance. This is members of Macomb County Mental Health, Macomb County Community Mental Health that came to the fire station to drop off more resources after our training. We recently assisted a resident with mobility issues. Oh, in there. Oh, wait, no. Sorry. We recently assisted a resident with mobility issues who was struggling with alcohol addiction. After being medically discharged from three different rehabilitation facilities due to falls, our team connected him with Personalized Nursing Lighthouse, a rehab facility that specializes in providing care to those with mobility issues. We have worked with organizations such as the Macomb County Charitable Foundation and Grace Centers of Hope to assist homeless individuals and families. We have also connected several families, including an unhoused mother and child, with hotels, and helped several residents enter one-year life skills program for unhoused people. We were able to help a veteran obtain a handicap access ramp for his home through a donation from the Trenton VFW facilitated by Alliance Club Connection. Through this process, we also connected him with the VA to help him get the military benefits he was entitled to but didn't know he was owed. I, along with Training Chief Shadowski, Training Officer Pham, I along with Training Chief Shadowski, Training Officer Pham, Case Manager Fennick, and our new veteran rep, George Turner, installed the ramp and gave the disabled veteran a whole new approach to his day-to-day life. We recently connected another disabled veteran with a much-needed furnace and hot water heater, thanks to Cause Heating and Cooling. This was made possible through their Heat for Heroes program, which provides no-cost service and installation of heating and cooling equipment for military members and first responders facing financial hardship. The MIH team has provided direct hands-on assistance in a variety of situations. In one instance, when a resident's food assistance account had a zero balance due to a clerical error, we provided a grocery store gift card to bridge the gap until our funds were available. We also helped an elderly resident with a non-functioning air conditioner by collaborating with CNC Heating and Air Conditioning to get her unit repaired at no cost. This partnership with CNC opened the door to allow us to provide additional support, including helping her with groceries, yard maintenance, and overdue medical appointments. Our work with residents extends to other forms of direct support, such as helping her with EBT, helping them with EBT benefits, and assisting with the completion of official documents, like a summer tax bill deferment and a garbage can handicap waiver. Our social work has been foundational to this program. The groundwork laid by our team, including our social workers, Marnie Fennick and Mark Hansel.
Please stand up.
Has been. Groundwork laid by them has been instrumental in our success. For example, they helped an elderly resident move from independent living to a comfort care facility and assisted with chores and estate planning. Their work, along with that of two volunteers from a local church, helped a resident, helped the resident move her furniture. We have been building on this legacy by making connections to legal services, advocating for patients' rights with Corwell Case Management, and assisting families in finding rehab facilities and establishing safe discharge plans. Ultimately, this program is the bridge that allows us to deliver the right resource at the right time to the right people. Without the dedicated framework and partnerships established by the Mobile Integrated Health Initiative, none of the life-changing outcomes you've heard today from securing vital veteran benefits to placing a resident in specialized rehab would have been possible through the traditional functions of the Sterling Heights Fire Department. This collaborative model is not just a theory. It's a sustainable strategy for improving community wellness that we are already putting into practice. It is your continued support and empowerment that allows us to serve our residents in these new and unique ways. We are applying this framework to assist other residents and continue to grow our network of resources to serve the city. Thank you once again for your time and continued support.
Okay. Well, thank you. And Chief, that's the end of your report, too?
That is the end of our presentation.
And Mayor and Council, thank you. Thank you for funding this position. You can see that it is already paying significant dividends in the community. And keep in mind, too, the idea here is also to ultimately reduce the reliance on our 911 system. Those who need help and can't find the resources to do it often resort to 911, and that overloads and stresses the system. So thank you for what is sure to be an award-winning program. This this is paying big dividends already. And Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel, and thank you to everyone who presented tonight. Appreciate the very helpful information. And we got a big crowd here today, so hopefully you you enjoyed the information you heard, too. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation. This is a swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights police officers. We do have a presentation from our police chief, Andrew Satterfield. Chief Satterfield.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel, and City Attorney Kazuski. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the newest additions to our police department just hired yesterday. If you guys would stand up, please. We recently completed a recruitment process, interviews, and intensive background checks. These are our first four officers on this hiring list that we're welcoming to our department. And I'm going to go from your left, my right. Officer Tyler Sakluna. He lives in Macomb with his wife Shelby and have three young children. Tyler has a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University in psychology and sociology. He comes to us with eight years' experience as a public safety officer from Centerline Public Safety, which includes police and firefighting duties. Officer Miranda Daud. She comes to us with five years' police experience from West Bloom Field Police Department. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Ferris State University. And she's also bilingual and Chaldean, which will be a great asset to our department. Next is Officer Adam Mays. Officer Mays is joining our department after four years at Chesterfield Township PD. And prior to that, he had four years at Macomb County Sheriff's Department. In addition to his eight years of law enforcement experience, Officer Mays holds an associate's degree from Macomb Community College. And Officer Andy Kafritsis, yes, has nine years of police experience from the Detroit Police Department. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Macomb Community College. And his wife, he and his wife live in Macomb Township with their three children. He is also bilingual and Greek. So now we're going to do these swear-ins. So if you could all raise your right hands, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Adam Mays.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of the department.
And I will strive to maintain the highest standards of the department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I'd like to have their guests come up that will be pinning their badges on them. Officer Sakluna's wife Shelby will be pinning his badge on him. Tyler, would you like to say a few words to Council?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vanderpool, men and women of City Council, I would just like to thank you for the exciting opportunity that lies before me for, to join a growing, promising community of Sterling Heights. I'm not a stranger to the community. I grew up in Clinton Township, spent a large majority of my childhood here in the city, and I'm just looking forward to being a part of something, something better.
Officer Daoud's badge will be pinned on by her mentor and former college professor, who is also retired captain with our department. Captain Gino LeBe was a criminal justice professor at Macomb Community College where he first started mentoring Officer Daoud toward a career in law enforcement. Thank you, Chief. Miranda. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. Sterling Heights is my home. I have a lot of family members that live here, a lot of friends that live here. My family's own business is here. It's truly such a blessing to work in a place that I consider to be my home and that I have a personal connection to. I'm truly excited for what the future holds, and I'm excited to be a positive contribution to this community, so thank you.
And Officer Mays is having his badge pinned on by his friend Danielle Gentry, who is currently a dispatcher for Chesterfield Township.
It's a little short for me. Good evening, everyone. I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity. I'm very grateful for all my friends and family that are here tonight, and I look forward to serving this community. Thank you.
Officer Kafritsis' badge is being pinned on by his wife Kimberly.
Wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity. I feel blessed to be here. I'm looking forward to serving and working with the citizens and the community. Thank you.
And Council, I'd like to personally thank all of you on Council for supporting our department, not only through your words, but your actions of approving equipment requests, contracts, and police programs that serve our citizens. Through your support, we are truly a destination department and destination city. This is proof of that, as we have four more officers choosing Sterling Heights to serve. To the new officers, I give you the same advice and message that I've been giving the entire department to be successful. Do the best you can, do the right thing, and show people you care. Good luck and stay safe. Would the Council like to come down and?
Yeah, we'll come down. We'd like to come down, shake your hand, congratulate you, and then if you don't mind, sit tight for a couple more minutes because the Council, I'm sure, is gonna have some comments to make and, and like to welcome you onto, onto the staff and onto the department. So, Council, if you'll join me. All right. As I said before you guys leave tonight, I know the council members are gonna have a few words to share with you, and as always, we'll start with our Mayor Protemlis Zarowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the mayor lets me start because my son is a military officer and a military police officer, so, in the Marine Corps, so I have a little bit of firsthand experience in, in law enforcement and how that looks. But you guys are on the streets in our cities, and I really want to welcome you. Thank you for choosing Sterling Heights. Thank you for choosing the career that you've chosen, to give up your life yourselves to your families. I understand what it feels like to have somebody you love on the, on the front lines of whatever they're doing on a daily basis, so I will say my prayers for all of you, and I pray and thank you again for coming to the city. Work hard, we will give you the tools you need. We are very much behind you, and again, welcome to Sterling Heights.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarowski. Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just wanna welcome you to the family, as dysfunctional as we are some days. We are all on the same page as far as this is a great community, and we're all looking forward to keeping it a great and safe community. The first thing that you're gonna learn is that this community supports our police department. They have approved tax increases to support our police department. Not every community can say that. So just know that our residents are behind you. This council is behind you. I, I think I can speak for my colleagues. Stay safe out there, and just do the best you can. That's all we can ask for you to do. Stay honest, your integrity is everything, and most importantly, go home to your family at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Zarowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are lucky to have the people of Sterling Heights behind our police department. We are the safest city in the state, and we have a very high standard. And you're going to meet and exceed that standard because you are the best, and our residents will back you every step of the way. So welcome to Sterling Heights. I want you to stay safe, and I want you to remember that we expect a lot out of you because you are the best that we're gonna have here, okay? So good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Sterling Heights. Thank you for choosing Sterling Heights. You'll find that we are a family here. We care about you as you're going to care about us. You'll find that we have a council here that supports you and tries our very best to provide you with the equipment that you need so that you stay safe, so that you can keep us safe. And you'll find that we have lots of exciting things going on here, fun things, but we're gonna make you work. So welcome again to the family. Stay safe, do your best, and that's all we ask. Thank you.
Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This never gets old. I do, but this never gets old. To see new people come in, and especially to note that we are still a destination department that you put a lot of time in, in other departments, but you ended up coming here. Because of Sterling Heights reputation, as a former employee, retired firefighter, I can tell you what a great employer the city of Sterling Heights is. You'll have great careers here. Even though we are a safe community, you never know, every time you get in your car, you know, what kind of call you're gonna get. But as everybody else here has said, we up here have your back. We've got a great new chief, we have a lot of confidence in him, and without that, I would just say good luck and, and have a great career, and invite me to your retirement party.
All right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I feel like the anchor on the bowling team because everything else has been said, so I gotta come up with new stuff. So first of all, welcome to this great city of Sterling Heights. I was serving it for 24 years, and I love every minute of it, at the residents, the employees. Take advantage of the programs that we provide for our employees. Ask questions about it. If you need help, we have people that'll help you get through a daily, you know, something that happens during the day or an actual crisis in your life, but we're here to make sure that you do your best. So just remember that we're, we're supporting you, and we want you to succeed because when you succeed, we succeed. So good luck to all of you, and be safe out there. Nothing further, thank you.
All right, well, thank, thank you, Council, and thank you to the four new police officers for, for choosing to come relocate your careers here in the city of Sterling Heights. As many of my colleagues said, we have a great reputation as a safe city, and it's in very, very large part because of our police department. Many of the problems that have plagued other police departments, we've been able to mostly avoid here because we, we've hired people with integrity, with honesty, that come to work every day, ready to, to protect and serve the residents. And as my colleague said, you know, you're gonna find that the residents here in the city of Sterling Heights really support you just as well as any other city in the country. And so we're proud of that. We're proud to have the reputation that we have and the legacy that, that we have as, as a great police department, and, and that legacy is now in your hands. So we, we chose the, the four of you because we trust that you are able to, to live up to that standard, and, and we have no doubt that you will. But I just wanna say thank you again, and to, to the family members. I know there's a lot of family members here, there's people here for the beautification awards and other, other things, but to the family members, you know, many of you are sort of veteran police officers already, many years in the service, and, and so I, I don't think I need to remind family members that they need your love, they need your support, they need your, your help, and, you know, lift them up. This is a tough job, and, and they need you. So we appreciate that, that you're sharing your, your loved ones with us and with the residents of Sterling Heights to keep us safe. There's, there's really no higher calling, in my opinion, than, than public safety, and to, to be doing that here for us means the world. So God bless each one of you, and if we could, one more big round of applause for these four great citizens. Thank you very much, Chief. Now, we have another president. You guys can leave if you want. I mean, I know you're not gonna be here the whole night, so if you guys wanna, wanna get going, we're gonna move on to the next swearing-in, but we do have another swearing-in for, for, for first responders and public safety. This swearing-in ceremony is for four new Sterling Heights firefighter, emergency medical technicians, with a presentation from our Fire Chief Kevin Edmund. Chief Edmund, this is the sixth time I've introduced you tonight, I think, or today. We gotta.
Stop meeting like this. All right. I'm tired too.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council, Mr. Vanderpool, and Mr. Kazubski. What I wanna do tonight is introduce our peak staff ambulance, basic EMTs. We started this program September 23rd. In the eight days that it's been in service, they've taken 8% of the call load in those eight days. So they're doing a great job for the city, they're doing a great job for the fire department, and they're really excited. So I'm gonna go through and, and talk about each one of them, and then we'll go from there. So Aiden, if you wanna step forward. Aiden grew up in Washington Township, Michigan. He worked at MedStar for the past year, and he's a part-time employee for the Washington Township Fire Department. He attended Macomb Community College for training to get all of the certifications, and he's truly excited to be here, just like all of the other ones. Okay. Nick Prantara. Nick is a resident from St. Clair Shores. He's been in the fire service for over three years. He worked in two part-time fire departments before coming to work for us in Novi and Chesterfield, and he attended Oakland Community College for his education. The other Nick. Nick Wilson. Nick is from Troy. He worked in emergency service roughly five years for the Great Lakes Water Department, doing hazmat stuff and technical rescue. He attended Oakland University for his education. He's got a bachelor's degree. And last but not least, Christopher. Christopher is also from Troy. He attended Oakland Community College for his education, and recently worked for Superior Ambulance. He loves it here a lot more than Superior. The interesting thing about Christopher, he's kinda late to the group for everything because we had somebody that, that kinda turned us down. But he's also a lacrosse coach at Troy High School.
All right.
So maybe he can be a lacrosse coach in Sterling Heights eventually. They're all very excited to take part in this new initiative and the opportunities that our fire department offers. And once again, I wanna thank you for, one, supporting us in that strategic planning document that we put together, a lot of things that we brought forward tonight with the medical priority dispatch, the peak time staffing ambulance, and the mobile integrated health were part of that document. So plans do work if you do them, and you follow them, and I wanna thank you for letting our organization go through that planning process and develop those things, so we could better serve the residents of Sterling Heights. And I didn't, you guys wanna kinda raise your right hand? Okay. State your name. Have you guys state your name?
Nicholas Prantara. Christopher Baxter.
All right. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
And that I will comply with the rules and regulations.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations.
Of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
Of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And will discharge my duties.
And will discharge my duties.
Of my office to the best of my ability.
Of my office to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking, I'm excited to be a part of the Sterling Heights community, and I'm looking forward to the next 25 years of my life.
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity. Feel very welcomed by the, not only the fire department, but also the city. Just excited to work here for the next 25 years, and wanna say thank you.
I'd also like to say thank you for the opportunity, and along with these guys, I'm very grateful for this, and I'm really looking forward to the next 25 years as well.
Now, you can work longer than that if you want.
Good evening, folks. I'm sure you can guess what I'm about to say. I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity. I am excited for the next 25 years. More than that, I'm just super excited to have the opportunity to work with these guys and with a department that's got such a great reputation in the fire community. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I, can I, oh yeah, we're gonna go down, we'll go down. You got it. Can I start on the other side this time, Lawrence? You want to ask, you want to ask?
Welcome and congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats and happy days.
Congrats, man.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I appreciate it. That's right. Thank you. Thank you.
Are we gonna actually? Actually. All right, we're gonna start down on my left this time. Mrs. Zarco, the first one.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm gonna repeat some of the things that I said, but first of all, welcome aboard. I'm glad you have chosen Sterling Heights. We want you to be successful, so that's why we're here, to help you in whatever ways that we can. Like I said, take advantage of the programs that we offer, ask for help, ask for questions. If there's, there's always something and some, you know, that we can help you with or in someone that's willing to help you. So take advantage of all that and be safe out there. And thank you for even, first of all, the fire department for trying this program, and for all of you to say, yeah, we'll give it a try, and we'll come aboard and see how it works. So thank you for, you know, leading the way.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So congratulations. And just what I told the police officers, you know, this is a great place to work. As you all know, I think you know, I was an employee here. I went to the union meeting last night, and they introduced me as Councilman Yanis, and I had to remind them that I actually worked here at one point. This really is a great job, but, you know, the one thing I, I want you to be aware of is... This really is a great job. But, you know, the one thing I want you to be aware of is, you know, when I first started in the mid-'90s, we were known as Phoenix East. Now, that doesn't mean anything to you. But at the time, the Phoenix Fire Department was the most progressive fire department in the country. And we sort of modeled ourselves, our chief at that time, Chief Childs, sort of modeled ourselves at that. We have always been a progressive department. We've always been a forward-looking department. And we've always had the best. You know, we had the best equipment. We had the best training. The people I worked with were phenomenal. I was a pretty good paramedic, but, I mean, I worked with guys who were just absolutely phenomenal. And those are the standards that we, as firefighters, held ourselves to. And these are the standards that we expect you to hold yourselves to. The citizens here are great. They love their fire department. We told the police that the citizens were behind them. They are, but they really love you guys. And you'll get to see that. So they will give you all kinds of love. You got to just give them a lot of love back. I know you'll do that. I know you'll do your job safely with great supervision. And then as you go ahead and learn, as you get older, you will mentor guys who are standing in that same exact position as you are. And I just want to say good luck and be safe every single day you go out there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Yanez. Mrs. Koshewski.
Thank you. Welcome to Sterling Heights. Thank you for choosing Sterling Heights. And 25 years, I don't think I'll be here for your retirement, but you've got 25 years. This is a great opportunity for you. You've got a great chief there. He's going to teach you an awful lot. And I hope you take advantage of it. This is a new project that he initiated it. And I know that you're going to do very well, make him proud, make us proud. But again, I repeat, continue your education. Take the knowledge that he offers to you. And you will, I'm sure, enjoy every single bit of it. And as it's been said, the people here in Sterling Heights love their firefighters. And when you get to work their open house on a Sunday, for only three hours, but you're going to go home like, oh gee, I need some rest. So again, welcome. You will enjoy it. 25 years.
Thank you, Mrs. Koshewski. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. I'm sure you're going to have a long 25-year career here. You know, our residents really invest in public safety, both police and fire. And you're going to do a great job. And I'm very excited for the BLS ambulance program. I think it's going to be a paradigm shift in the fire department. 10-hour shifts, you work four days a week, you get the weekends to yourself. I'm excited for you folks to have a life outside of the fire department. So good luck. Stay safe. And you're going to love it here. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Radke, Mrs. Schmitt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Once again, welcome to the family. I think it's an exciting time for you folks. You are on the ground floor of a new position. And while there may be some kinks to work out, I'm sure, you know, the chief is going to be on top of everything. You're doing a service not only to the community, but you're also helping out the firefighter paramedics as well. You know, it's gotten stressed. And this was a great, great solution to relieving some of that stress. We're grateful for you. The ceiling is there. Break through it, right? So stay safe and once again, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, gentlemen, welcome. I am a nurse. So I work very closely with paramedics and firefighters whenever I've been in home care, which is where my, basically, I did most of my career. I really am so glad to have you here. Thank you so much for being firefighters. It's, you know, it's, we've said, some of my colleagues have said, it's a fun job. It's a great job. And I know that it can be. It's also a dangerous job. And I want you to be safe, to take care of yourselves. Families, keep a good eye on them. Make sure that they're eating well and sleeping well. And know that we're, as we've said, we are so behind you. We are grateful to have you here. We're grateful to keep our numbers up in the fire department and help grow that department to have all the numbers and the positions completely filled. And you are helping us with that. So thank you and be safe and enjoy your next 25 years.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Sarowski. I've been in the firehouse a couple times. I can tell you, they seem to eat well when I'm there. Maybe it's just because I'm a special guest, but I'm not so sure they sleep well. So at least not in the firehouse. We're a busy city. We've got a lot going on. We're encountering more and more runs every year. This program is going to help address that and I think relieve some stress to the other areas of our fire department. So the four of you, I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for choosing this career, as I said. Choosing a career in public safety is a great calling and it's very honorable. And we're just very blessed to have the fire department that we have, that has the reputation as being the best in Michigan and beyond. And as I said to the police officers who were here earlier, it's now your turn to continue that legacy and we hope that you will because that's what our residents expect and deserve. And so we wouldn't be hiring you if you didn't think, if we didn't think you were up to the task. So congratulations. And to the audience, one more big round of applause. Thank you, Chief. And with that, why don't we take about a less than five-minute break? And we'll come back for the beautification award. So we'll be in recess for about five minutes.
Calling this meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Next up is another presentation tonight, and this is the 2025 Beautification Awards Presentation. We have -- the presentation will be led by the Chairman of the Beautification Commission, Mr. Gary Isom.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and City Council, and Mark Vandabel. Good evening. My name is Gary Isom, and I'm the chairperson of the Sterling Heights Beautification Commission. And tonight, it gives me great pleasure to present our 2025 Beautification Awards. The Sterling Heights Beautification Commission's mission is to encourage all city residents and property owners to preserve and enhance the beauty of public and private properties. One of the ways we do that is through our annual award ceremony, where we honor those who go above and beyond in beautifying their Sterling Heights properties. Tonight, we carry on that tradition here before this body. We thank you for welcoming this presentation, as we showcase our residents and business leaders' dedication to making Sterling Heights a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. For the past five months, Beautification Commission welcomed nominations from citizens who wished to recognize a Sterling Heights property for outstanding beauty resulting from the planting of annuals and perennials. The Commission reviewed photographs taken of 24 nominated homes, businesses, and places of worship. Commissioners judged nominations and selected the best of the best from each category that had a wow factor when seen from the curb. Commissioners selected winners based on overall beauty, aesthetics, artistic use of color. Each nomination will be presented in the categories of single-family resident properties, multifamily properties, commercial properties, and places of worship. A best-of-the-best recipient will be honored in each of these categories for which they were nominated. This year, the Commission is also excited to shine a spotlight on sustainability. In addition to celebrating beauty, we recognize the importance of environmental-friendly practices that benefit our entire community. With that in mind, we are proud to introduce the Sterling Green Garden Award. This new category honors properties that incorporated native plants, rain gardens, and pollinator-friendly creatures. These gardens support biodiversity, help reduce flooding, and create a lasting impact beyond their beauty. I'd like to thank all the beautification commissioners here tonight for their dedication to this program. As I call your names, please stand: Thomas Howard III, Susan Holbig, Manny Gonzalez, and Lisa Lane. At this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Taylor and members of City Council to join me presenting the 2025 Sterling Heights Beautification Awards. To the award recipients here tonight, when your address is called, please come forward to receive your award from Mayor Taylor. A photograph of the honored address will be shown on a Sterling Heights TV and here on the video screen. And for the best-of-the-best recipients here tonight, will you please stay up here so that we can get a photograph?
Residential Properties. 11125 Grenada Drive. 11258 Glenys Drive. 14267 Lakeshore Drive.
Who did all the work?
Congratulations.
34401 Amsterdam Drive. 37637 Elper Drive. 5589 Kebby Drive. 39475 Helena Avenue. 40323 Colony Drive. 41134 Harvard Drive. 41215 Fieldview Drive. 43243 Chardonnay Drive. 43239 Cove Court. Places of Worship. St. Matthias Catholic Church. St. Jane Frances D. Chantel.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll see you again, I think.
Nice to see you guys back. Beautiful job.
Beautiful job.
You're so welcome. Lovely work. Thank you, sweetie.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all your work. Congratulations.
Businesses. Dinka Dental.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Good job, Doc.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Wish they could.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Beautiful.
Dodge Park Coney Island.
No idea. Air does hard work.
I'm just here to collect the.
Yeah, it's Air does.
Jesus.
Slifco Electric.
Unfortunately, Slifco Brothers could not be present this evening because they are at the Tiger game.
There are no speeches.
We're at the church.
That's okay.
Now the one.
You guys look familiar.
Thank you.
Runners-up. 36239 Melbourne Drive.
We know she does all the work.
It's beautiful.
Oh, I love it.
Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, that's what I never could tell.
Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you.
14022 Coldwater Drive. 35749 Deering Drive. And now for the best of the best. 3521 Leeson.
Oh, I dropped your card, sorry. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Don't give him the credit, he's not.
He did all the watering.
They don't complete it on their water bill, so I guess that's a good thing.
We have an underground sprinkling system.
It's always good to see you. Time to time, if you get this, the best-of-the-best couple. Couple, yeah. Oh, thank you.
That's pretty fitting. A lot of water.
Wow.
Can I get you in the middle for a quick picture?
Can I over here?
In the middle. Right here, you have a turn here, Maran. Here, Miko. There you go.
Congratulations.
38539 Clearmont Drive.
She officially got off. Congratulations.
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 Those are actually for bees? Those are for bee house. So I have native bees in there.
The nature.
The whole thing?
The green, so we have bees.
We have butterflies, we have grasshoppers, we have crickets, we have praying mantis, we have just about everything you can think of.
Absolutely. I work at the nature center, so.
She takes care of our butterflies.
Make that brostage.
In the middle, in the middle, yeah. Okay, there you go, Sue. Good job.
We're the ones to talk to here.
Ventamiglia Italian Foods.
She was here. Yeah, they were here. She was here. They were here, they must have left. They were here. Yeah, they were here.
St. Michael Catholic Community.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looks pretty nice, huh? Beautiful. Congratulations.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Nice job, beautiful.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Picture.
Picture.
Come back over there. Both of you. Switch, switch. Yeah, you're good, you're good. You're fine. Okay, good job.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
He's got one more to read, yep. Perfect. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your attendance tonight's Beautification Awards. Please remain seated so City Council may formally recognize tonight's recipients. And remember, the Sterling Heights Beautification Commission is sponsoring our annual Halloween Home Decoration Contest, followed by a Christmas Holiday Decoration Contest, so be sure to get your pictures into our Community Relations Department.
Thank you very much, Gary, and to all the beautification commissioners. Now, we do have a suggested action, Council.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Serowski.
Resolve to individually and collectively recognize the 2025 Beautification Award winners and thank them for the dedication and effort in making their properties, neighborhoods, and the city of Sterling Heights a more beautiful place to live, work, and play.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Serowski?
Just to say thank you to all the participants and all of the people who may not have won an award but still work to beautify our community.
Council, anyone else? I'll just echo that and also add another thank you to the Beautificate -- I'm sorry, Beautification Commission. You guys are phenomenal. We appreciate what you do. I think that the city of Sterling Heights has a reputation of being a place where we're trying to make the city look nicer, whether it's through public art or through the landscaping that we're doing on City Medians, and you guys are carrying out that mission throughout the community, and it's paying off. And I'm certain that as property values are increasing and people are becoming more and more proud of their homes and their neighborhoods, it's really growing. So you guys do a great job, and our residents, I want to thank each one of you for being here and taking pride in your community. So, Council, with no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, we will move on now to the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda?
Hello, my name is Sarah Fisher, and I'm a resident. I just wanted to say that I think it's great that we are doing a new zoning ordinance, and I know that was on the consent agenda today, some part of funding that. I think there's only been one update to our zoning ordinance since 1968, so I think it's wonderful that we're going to be updating that, and I hope that there's lots of sustainability initiatives in that, bringing it in accordance with our master plan and sustainability plan, especially regarding composting. I hope there's something in there about composting and food waste reduction, and I'm glad we're going to be reducing setback requirements because that makes our city a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly place, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, that completes our business portion of tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight? I'll start with you.
Hi there, my name's Sarah Fisher again. I wanted to say that a few months ago, when you all voted to approve the bond for working on public parks, I was very much in support of that. I'm really glad that we're going to be making progress on Red Run Park before some of the tariffs increase. I live over in that area, and there are no places to walk or trails to do over there. There's just sidewalks over by Shaner, or you can walk by like the Consumers Energy place, which also smells like natural gas, so it will be really nice to have a park nearby and have that opportunity. So thank you for not having us wait 15 years for that. Also, last time, I wasn't able to make it, but I was not in support of putting an outdoor storage facility around that same area. I don't think that makes the community more walkable. I don't think that was the best use of even contaminated land. I sent everyone on City Council an email about opportunities that we could have pushed developers to apply for brownfield redevelopment funding. I think there were real opportunities to take contaminated land and make them into something that our community needed a little bit more than an outdoor storage facility, but it is what it is. But in the future, whenever there is contaminated land, there is funding available through the state of Michigan, through counties, through any brownfield redevelopment organization that can help with mitigating the costs associated with having the property be contaminated, things like assessment and mitigation, and we're not -- just because the property was a former landfill, that doesn't mean that we can't do something more with that property. So I would encourage, in the future, when we have contaminated properties, to encourage developers to seek out that brownfield redevelopment funding and utilize resources that are available across the state of Michigan, because there's no reason that we can't access those in our own community. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that there's an organization called McComb Defenders Rising, and we meet at the UAW in Sterling Heights, and it's an organization, it's a group of people around the area that are progressive and interested in civic engagement, and there's often people running for office that come and speak or introduce themselves and share, you know, some of the things that they're working on and help with having a more civically engaged community. So if anyone is interested, we meet once a month. This is also, this invite is for anyone on City Council, as well as anyone listening. If there are progressive people wanting to hear their voice heard and meet others out there, it's going to be on Monday at the UAW in Sterling Heights. McComb Defenders Rising is the name, you can look it up. Yeah, that was all I had, so thank you very much for your time and thank you for your service on City Council.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fisher, appreciate that. Yep, I'll take you next.
Oh, I should lower this.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kraszewski, and members of City Council. I have introduced myself before, but just in case. I'm Elizabeth Coppolo, I'm with the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. I just wanted to highlight some events and activities that we have coming up. So over the summer, we had the Bear Cup Book Club, and we had so much fun that we are continuing it into the fall. We have a fall series going at the library, so I would love to have you all attend as reading mentors, if your schedule allows for it. I know we had some familiar faces come, and we'd love to have you back. And those of you that weren't able to make it, we'd love to have you attend for the first time. The dates for that are October 22nd at 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., November 19th and December 17th, all from 6:00 to 7:30. We're in the Storytime Room at the Sterling Heights Public Library. We are also having our October meeting on October 23rd at 5:30 p.m. in the Programming Center of the library, and at that meeting, we're just going to be reviewing our last year, our impact over the last year, and October 23rd is also the first day of Red Ribbon Week, which is the nation's largest and longest-running substance use prevention campaign, so we're going to be kicking that off. So we would also love to see you at our meeting on October 23rd. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? If not, we'll close that portion. Move on to reports from City Administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Kraszewski, anything tonight?
No close session, Mayor.
Council, anything tonight? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.